And it really requires an expert with a lot of experience here because an expert can make the difference between a few percentage points on an interest level. So, I spoke to him, he's very, very knowledgeable, very good at what he does. I think he's going to help the village through the process and also will also send on saving the village taxpayers a great deal of money. So I'm going to read through both these resolutions and I guess we have to have two separate votes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Whereas, I'm looking at the wrong one. Okay. On a motion, a motion by trustee, what I have motion?
That's John.
Seconded by trustee.
It's the order.
The board hereby accepts the proposal from Munistat Services Incorporated dated May 9th, 2011 for preparation and printing of the statement of annual financial and operating information and the filing of such document together with the annual bond market compliance service. The mayor is hereby authorized to sign the proposal which will be 1,500 for the 2012 fiscal year. And this is part of the process of the bonding of certain financial documents that need to be filed in order for us to go through with them. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, signal, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at something else for a little while. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I have the second one here. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
Second.
All right. The board hereby accepts the proposal from Munistat Services Incorporated dated May 9th, 2011 for financial advisory services. The mayor is hereby authorized to sign the proposal which includes fees for formal public sale of serial bonds not to exceed $7,500, fees for the formal public sales of short-term obligations not to exceed $3,500, and services for informal private sales or other short-term obligations not to exceed $1,500. So this will cover the remainder of the VAS, the long-term serial bonds. And the nice thing about it is, I know I initially thought the larger the money, the larger the cost is going to be, but obviously that's not the case because whether it's 10 million or 1 million, this individual's doing the same amount of work. So it's very cost-effective for us and as I said before, it's going to save the village a lot of money hopefully. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I have the second one here. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
Second.
All right. The board hereby accepts the proposal from Munistat Services Incorporated dated May 9th, 2011 for financial advisory services. The mayor is hereby authorized to sign the proposal which includes fees for formal public sale of serial bonds not to exceed $7,500, fees for the formal public sales of short-term obligations not to exceed $3,500, and services for informal private sales or other short-term obligations not to exceed $1,500. So this will cover the remainder of the VAS, the long-term serial bonds. And the nice thing about it is, I know I initially thought the larger the money, the larger the cost is going to be, but obviously that's not the case because whether it's 10 million or 1 million, this individual's doing the same amount of work. So it's very cost-effective for us and as I said before, it's going to save the village a lot of money hopefully. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have the sewer special assessment. We finally got some information from our accountant, Mr. Venary. After we had our public hearing, a lot of residents came out and talked about the wish to learn about the assessment done instead of a flat assessment to increase our usage rates to the billing for the new cost of moving the dirt pile based on usage. So the board at the time after the public hearing, we listened to the residents, we decided, okay, this merits another look, let's do some research here. So we had tasked our village jet, but not attorney accountant, to do the research for that. And he came back with information that basically backed up what we further anticipated. And essentially, if the assessment was kept the same and the increase was done based on the sewer usage, there would be about 75% of our population wouldn't see much of a change, it'd be a change of about $5 a quarter roughly. But you would have almost 20% of the popu-- or I'm sorry, almost 10% of the population would see an increase of $550 per year. So essentially, 3/4 of our population would save $5 a quarter whereas 9% of our population would pay $550 more. So because of that great discrepancy, it unfortunately solidified our further views that assessment was the way to go for the sewer increase. Now, this is something that isn't set in stone for the next 20, 25 years, just something we're going to continue to look at again and again. And once we finalize our borrowing for the dirt pile, once we finish the work, move the dirt, we're going to be able to look at it again and find out, okay, these are our definite finalized costs, the project is over, and we can look at potentially decreasing the assessment. Additionally, as we've mentioned since day one, finding new sewer users will also help us decrease the sewer assessment. And from this moment on, it's been in the past, but even more so, I can tell you that the mission statement of this village board is to find new sewer customers to bring down our sewer rates and assessment for our village residents. That is my number one goal as the mayor of this municipality. So with all that on, any further discussion before we read the resolution?
Aye.
Okay. Hearing none?
We have to do the one about the negative declaration first.
That's correct, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. The one with the Chronicle?
Yeah.
This one? This one. All right. Whereas the village of Ocean has heretofore held a public hearing for the purpose of considering an increase, the current sewer special assessment to 170 per quarter for the purpose of paying the debt incurred regarding the construction of the new wastewater treatment facility inclusive of the remediation of the material stockpiled on site during construction of the new facility. And whereas, the increase of the sewer special assessment is an unlisted action pursuant to the implementing regulations of the environmental conservation law set forth at 6 NYCRR Part 617. And whereas, there are no other involved agencies, coordinated review is not required, and the village board shall act as lead agency in connection with the adoption of this special assessment. And whereas, the village board determines that the adoption of this special sewer assessment increase will have no significant adverse environmental impact. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village of Ocean, village board of the village of Ocean issues a negative declaration in connection with the adoption of this sewer special assessment increase. With the roll call vote.
Trustee Char.
Aye.
Trustee Matthews. Kind. Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Okay. Now the second part of this. Whereas the village board for the village of Ocean has heretofore duly convened a public hearing on April 25th, 2011, notice of which was published in the Ocean Independent and the Chronicle, the official newspapers of the village, on April 13th, 2011 and April 14th, 2011 respectively, and notice of which was additionally mailed to all affected property owners for the purpose of considering an increase in the existing sewer special assessment. And whereas, the increase in the sewer special assessment is required for the purpose of paying debt incurred to construct the new wastewater treatment plant inclusive of the remediation of the material stockpile on site during construction of the new facility. And whereas, the village board hereby determines that increase in the sewer special assessment to 170 per unit per quarter is sufficient and adequate to pay the debt service incurred. Now, heretofore, it is hereby resolved that the sewer special assessment be increased to 170 per unit per quarter effective within the next appropriate billing cycle, said special assessment to continue until the obligations identified herein above are paid in full. Roll call vote.
Trustee Char.
If I could just, I think, yeah, let's make a motion.
We have to make a, leave a motion in a second.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Trustee Char.
First, I just want to say a couple things that I want people to know that this is a, let's just say a work in progress in that this will be continually reevaluated just by way of an example. As I said, coming up with this number, we had a couple assumptions. One assumption that had to be made, for example, was the interest rate on the bond, that was assumed at 6%. Well, we want to bring this to bond within the next 12 months, we probably will come in more in the 4, 4.5 range given the current market conditions, in which case, I think right there, we're probably going to be able to lower the assessment once we have that final number. So I just want people to know though that this is a work in progress and it's not just being done and then forgotten about for 20 years.
Well said.
I think that as well, I think it's important to note the evaluation process that went into in fact when Mr. Venary was here and made a very astute statement which was that he tried every way possible to have it work out more equitably in another fashion other than assessment and came to the conclusion that that was the strongest, most equitable way to do it. We've done that evaluation in the past and come to the same, but I want the public to know that the board takes very seriously the impacts of, the financial impacts of this and look for things to be fair, equitable, and most conservative possible in the cost to the people.
So any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Trustee Char.
Aye.
Trustee Matthews.
Aye.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Our last item of business on the agenda is something that is for a change, very, very positive. This is something that is going to be a great thing for the village of Ocean. I want to recognize Jim Taylor who's here, the present CEO of Taylor Biomass, and James Rollins, one of the vice presidents there for coming tonight. Mr. Taylor is an innovator, a leader in his field, and I'm going to speak briefly about what we're going to be voting on tonight. Right now, the village of Ocean sends our garbage and we pay $80 a ton for garbage. Recently, we got a letter from our provider, we're going to have it increase an 8% surcharge for fuel. So our costs are now jumping from $80 a ton to $86 a ton roughly. Mr. Taylor's proposal, and Mr. Rollins was kind enough to come to our work session last week, comes in at $66 per ton, which is an enormous cost savings to the village of Ocean. Just to put it in perspective, every week we roughly take 35 tons and with the savings of $20 per ton, it's going to save us the first year $36,000 annually, which is essentially a percentage point in our taxes. So with the growing cost of health insurance, utilities, retirement, the fact that we can save money without taking on any new expenses is, I think, a very, very positive thing. On top of the fact that this is world-changing technology, it is something that has been heavily supported by Senator Schumer, and I commend Taylor Biomass for overcoming the obstacles that have been laid in front of them throughout the process. And I know this is going to be a positive thing for us and energy in the world as a whole. Well, lastly, and one of the things we've talked about was what if a new technology emerges after signing this contract? Well, I think based on everything that I've learned and read, if there is a new technology for garbage disposal, it'll be led by Jim Taylor and his company. So I don't think we need to worry about that at all because the people that we're going to be working with are on the forefront of this. Now, this resolution that we're going to pass tonight is subject to final approval by the village attorney. It's a 20-year contract, so naturally we want to make sure that we give it a good look through, through our attorney to make sure the village is protected, but everything I've seen so far looks positive. I'm going to ask for, is there any further discussion before I ask for a motion?
Well, you want the discussion now as opposed to...
Whatever you like.
However you want me to do it.
Even good.
Okay. I, you know, brought this up last time we met, and I thank you for coming all the way. A 20-year contract, it harkens me back to when I was negotiating for the village of Mossada, and 20 years is a very long time. We spoke about how we can protect the village. And I raised the issue of new technology, and I know that we also discussed, and certainly the mayor and I did, we discussed it this evening, the concept of another municipality coming, negotiating harder and coming up with price. I know that we're making the right decision in going with this kind of technology and saving our money, but I would want to make sure for the record, my attorney, that if new technology comes in, we have to have some way of being able to embrace it. And number two, though I have every respect for your work, I think that we have to protect the village in some fashion, be creative. And number two, that if anyone negotiates better price because they hold out or they're for somehow, that we get the benefit of that anytime during the entire contract.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. I'll read the resolution and I'll have a roll call vote. Whereas the village of Ocean is in receipt of a proposal from TVE Montgomery LLC, here and referred to as TVE, pursuant to its TVE offers to accept for a fee municipal solid waste generated by the village and TVE and thereafter sort and separate said waste and gasify biomass to generate renewable electric energy. And whereas, the village of Ocean believes that this new technology presents an environmentally sensitive method of disposing waste. And whereas, the village board further believes that renewable electric energy will be a benefit to the general health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village of Ocean and to the citizenry at large. Whereas, TVE has submitted a contract wherein and whereby it agrees to accept the waste generated by the village of Ocean for the fee specified in said contract and further agrees to sort and separate said waste and gasify biomass so as to generate renewable electric energy. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the mayor of the village of Ocean is hereby authorized to affix the signature to said contract subject to review of village attorney as to the form and content of said agreement. With the roll call vote.
Trustee Char.
Aye.
Trustee Matthews.
Aye.
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to working with you and we thank you for taking the time. With that, that was our last item of business on the agenda. I'll open up for mayor and trustee comments. Start with trustee Stewart.
First of all, you just, for those here that are sitting here, as you know, we had a flood in the mayor's office and the floors were stained, they aren't done stained, I think, but they have one more time to go. So that's what you're smelling, you're smelling the odor of the stain that's on the floor in the mayor's lovely new office. DPW report, not much to report. Crews will start painting designated yellow areas weather permitting. And heavy rains have kept crews busy with drainage issues. That's it.
Trustee Matthews.
Okay. We start with trees. We have planted 20 new trees. We worked, the tree committee did an analysis, we wanted to continue our work on South Church. We were successful in being able to plant species appropriate trees under wires and where it's free and open. We were able to replant on Lincoln Avenue where they lost several trees of electricity for many days during storms. And we also were able to bring trees to areas that we've been building on over the years, some in Prospect, some on Orange Avenue, so we were completing the venues that we'd start. I would urge people, I know it's not an issue this week, but if you're lucky enough to have a tree put in the meeting, there's street trees between the sidewalk and the street, please water them. Please water them, and don't, you know, they're your tree to beautify your home, so please take care of them. Number two, I wanted to say that we've had a couple of meetings regarding the CRV wells. An update, just today, we had a meeting with Jim and Biffen and Art, myself, to, number one, have a status report and we're all on the same page. Number two, to find out the places where we are waiting responses from the county and how to motivate that best. And number three, to keep current with our responses to the DDC in Louisville. It seems in communication with the DDC and with the DOH here in Orange County that our submission needs minimal changes, some of it which has to do with an emergency, when you declare an emergency, they want to change in a couple of the emergency numbers by inches of work so that they meet up and that you're consistent. That was their only comment. So we're all working on that, but if it's opposed, it'll be brought to you for your approval. Aside from that, I just wanted to make one comment about the time travel record because the editorial the other day was really frosting. We did a very neighborly thing when we said we would try to assist these people in their new emergency with the tainted wells over by the county DPW. And I quoted their words from the editorial in my response because they said the village, the county, and the town should stop trying to avoid guilt and taking blame. And certainly, our only involvement here, and I say this as trustee and border commissioner particularly, our only involvement here was trying to be assistance to people who are in an emergency situation and in trouble. And the time cell record should have done a better job of making sure they had their facts right before they chatted with us. And as I said here, they should have been cheering us, I think you did the right thing. That's it.
Trustee Smith?
Trustee Char?
A couple items, just a reminder, Monday, the 30th, next Monday is the Memorial Day Parade, line up at 10:00 a.m. on Erie Street and at the Government Center, parades start at 11:00, so those driving in the area should be aware there will be detours and there'll be service at Phillips Square following the parade. On May 9th, a girl's bicycle was found on Fletcher Street, it'll be picked up at the police station upon proper identification. This one I found in the amusing category. Now, mates had the subject stopped for speeding, was subsequently charged with criminal impersonation. The chief does not inform us as to what he was impersonating. So I'll put them on that, but other than that, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I'll speak to sewer very quickly. Sewer Department continues to move the ball down the field with regard to our infrastructure improvements. Many people probably noticed there was some construction on Erie Street, what, the other week? An 80-foot sewer main was replaced there, and that was one of our hotspots for sewer overflows. And right now, that whole line there has been completely replaced and the actual manhole that had been having overflows was removed. So, and that actually, because there were some spots in that sewer line that were heavy for infiltration, during last week's heavy storms, the village did have two overflows that we reported to the DDC, but those overflows compared to ones in the past were very, very light, so I think a lot of progress has been made. Still a lot to be done and a lot will be done, but I think that we're making progress. And additionally, our sewer department crews continue to assist engineers with their manhole inspections. Outside of that, I just wanted to thank the chamber for a wonderful farmer's market opening day on Friday, they did a great job. Congresswoman Hayworth is kind enough to join us. And we also have, again, want to congratulate our trustee Char, and I want to congratulate all graduates, college graduates, village residents, a lot of them graduated from college this past weekend, so congratulations to them. And lastly, starting tomorrow and until Thursday, I'm going to be at Nicon, the New York Conference Mayor's up in Saratoga, so if there's anything that anyone needs, I can be reached via email and mobile, so you can give me a call or email me if for whatever reason I can't be reached and there's an emergency of some kind, kind, trustee Char as deputy mayor will be the one to speak to. All right. With that, I'll open up the citizens' comments. Ready? Mr. Andrews?
Yes, what's the status of the arbitration?
Arbitration is ongoing. We've submitted a brief to argue a point about separation of powers and the town submitted their response.
When did they submit their response?
Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon?
Correct.
So the, you didn't, you didn't, I thought you, the last meeting you said that they were going to start to be taking testimony, that hadn't started?
No, no, we're talking about dates in June.
Pardon?
June.
In June?
Correct.
Do you know when in June?
Do I know exactly when? No, I do not.
I mean, it just seems like this is going on and on. I mean, how long does it take to get the testimony going? Is somebody not wanting to?
Ultimately, ultimately what it is, is it's a legal process, we're going through that legal process, arguments are made about what to hear, what not to hear, the arbiter makes decisions, those can be appealed or moved forward, and we're working through the arbitration process. The one wants the process to end more than this village board, but we're not going to expedite the process and put village residents at fiscal jeopardy. So we're going through as quick as we can while taking care to go through the process in the appropriate way.
Okay. What's the status of the heritage development? Have they signed a contract with the village for taking, for the village handling their sewage?
I don't think we have assigned.
We haven't signed a contract. The board, a number of months ago, adopted a resolution authorizing or allowing the provision of service once they get their final approval, conditional final approval from the county board.
So that's, it's not a contract, but it's what, just an agreement or?
Well, it's not nothing signed yet. The idea was, the board at the time was, we're very interested, but it's premature until you have conditional final approval from the town of Ocean for us to sign the contract.
I mean, when you speak about new customers, this is what you're referring to, is new develop, new developments?
I'm referring to a lot of things. I would love to see some commercial development. Right now, there's not a lot of that going on unfortunately, so if there's a residential development that says, well, we can build our own package plant, or we can come to your sewer system, and we recognize that we're not going to facilitate residential development, then yes, we'll take them on as customers and they'll pay in and there'll be more revenue into the sewer system. And then ideally, our current residents will be able to pay less when we have that new revenue coming in. So that's one type, but that's not the only type we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Kristen? No? I've got a couple. The outflows that we had last week, what were the locations on those?
I believe it was Erie Street and was that the one?
I don't kind of remember those. I don't recall, it was in town, but I don't recall the location downtown.
Okay.
In the past, I've asked for an enumeration of the litigations ongoing, both against and by the village. Could we have a summary update of those litigation, the current litigations?
Absolutely.
Well, in the past, I provided those when asked. Has anything changed? I mean, I don't want, I can do it next meeting. Let me just sit, I don't want to do it off the top of my head and leave something out. But I believe the last time you asked...
Has there been anything that's been added?
Uh...
Just off the top of your head?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Subject to verification, I hope so.
Perhaps we can update that at the next meeting. And along those lines, if it's not any particular issue, perhaps we could make it a regular monthly feature of board meetings to have just an update.
That's the last thing I want, Joel, is to be a regular monthly feature, you know?
Oh, once a month, you know? Just, just...
Spotlight on the village of 30?
A spotlight on our legal situation, certainly, to see if anything has changed and just to have that information out in the open. It's interesting to see Mr. Taylor and his associate here tonight. I was expecting, I saw the article in the record indicating that there would be a vote tonight and anticipated that that was perhaps a mistaken piece of information because there really has not been an opportunity to chew on this problem, and there's certainly nothing pressing on the village at this point where it has to be done now. The, as I understand the resolution tonight, it simply authorizes you to go ahead and sign an agreement once our council is satisfied that an agreement has been negotiated to the best interest of the village. In other words, it doesn't need to come back to the village.
Spotlight on the village attorney?
It's spotlight on our, our legal situation, certainly, uh, to see if anything has changed and just to have that information out in the open. It's interesting to see Mr. Taylor and his associate here tonight. I was, um, expecting, uh, I, I saw the article in the record indicating that there would be a vote tonight and anticipated that that was perhaps a mistaken piece of information, because there really has not been an opportunity to chew on this problem, and there's certainly nothing pressing on the village at this point where it has to be done now. The, as I understand the resolution tonight, it simply authorizes you to go ahead and sign an agreement once, uh, our council is satisfied that, that an agreement has been negotiated to the best interest of the village. In, in other words, it doesn't need to come back to the board, but the negotiation is still open and ongoing. Along those lines, uh, I would like to suggest that certainly this board talked to other boards. Uh, cartels are formed all the time in the world. Drug cartels do it, coffee producers do it, uh, oil producers do it, agricultural interests do it, and there's no reason that municipalities shouldn't do it. I'm, I shouldn't say upset, but, but certainly concerned that Taylor Biomass, while I'm all in favor of what they're doing, uh, producing energy in a clean way and, uh, seeking to utilize resources, uh, as fully as possible, uh, that's a great enterprise and I certainly understand, uh, an investor's right and reasonable expectation to get a reasonable return on their investment. So I'm not concerned, you know, I'm not speaking out against Taylor's right to make money, uh, as much as they possibly can, but that's an adversarial process, and we're sitting on the other side of the table. And in this case, Taylor is really getting paid on both ends of the pipe. They're being paid for the product they're producing, and they're looking to have municipalities pay them upfront for what amounts to their feedstock. Whereas, most industries pay for feedstock, here, they're looking to have us pay them because municipalities are in the business of paying to get rid of their waste. So I would certainly urge the board and the mayor to look to other municipalities, uh, explore the possibility of getting together, uh, and sit as a group on the other side of the table from, uh, Taylor. I'm sure they're not happy to, to hear the idea tonight, but, uh, again, I'm, I'm fully in favor of what they're doing, I respect their right to, to make a dollar, but that's, uh, that's a door that swings in both directions.
Thank you. Any further comments? Anyone else? All right, that, I'll ask for a motion, Mr. John.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.